We're going to East Hampton Planning Board meeting for July 9th, 2013. Just so everybody knows, this meeting is being videotaped and recorded. Anybody here have something to speak to, anything that's not on the agenda? Minutes for May 28th. Motion to accept them as sent out.
I make motion to accept them, that's of May 28th, that's presented.
I'll second it. Any more discretion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
No any in our... The motion to accept the agenda as presented, if there are no additions or corrections.
I make motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seventy Parsons Street. You want to hear the sweep sheet? Give us a brief overview of what you want to do and...
Yeah, my name is Vladimir Bondur, I'm a owner of Seventy Parsons Street, which was last stock laundry at one point. It turned, it fired up building down, so it's a vacant lot right now. I intend to build up one building with forty minutes in it, nine hundred and sixty square feet each. I'll put a full basement and a stick-built frame, which they all have their own independent electricity, gas meter and water meter. That's my plan, to do that.
And either it's going to be all occupied or rental use?
Oh, those are all going to be rental use. We'll have a front parking in front of the building, super each unit. Total of eight altogether.
Did the planning department go through these plans and the building inspector, I didn't see any comments from him.
The building inspector, he was given an application, he did not submit anything back to the board. I'd like you to at least look at the multifamily section of the zoning ordinance, in particular the section regarding parking. So I encourage you to look at that right now, you have it in front of you?
Right.
Okay. There is some language in there regarding screening, and also some discussion there about parking in the front.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to alert you that. It does not appear there's any street trees or any vegetation that's being put at the base in the front of the project, which I believe would be preferable, possible. Given that it is a pretty dense residential neighborhood. Also looking at stormwater and how that's coming off the parking and where that's being directed to, again, because this is a residential neighborhood.
I haven't seen, there was no stormwater plan in here.
But you can ask staff.
No, I haven't.
Well, there is not. Simply because there is existing stormwater right here in the middle.
A drain?
A drain, yeah. That's what I expected.
But you've changed.
I'm not.
There wasn't pavement.
There is existing pavement there.
Exact, in the same, exact spot?
Right now, I believe it's a sand pit.
Pardon me?
Right now, I believe it's a sand pit, but there's no, there's no, it's just...
Everything has been cleared out. Yeah, so the parking lot's still there.
The parking lot is still there? In the application...
No, I'm just trying to see how wide it is. It's sixty-four, sixty-five feet across and thirty-two feet deep.
It's actually twenty-nine with a second floor overhangs in back.
No, no, I'm talking about your parking lot.
The parking lot. And where's the...
He said there's a drain in the center, but I, I want the city engineer to see this.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, the zoning ordinance specifically says that to the extent feasible, parking shouldn't be located in the front, so.
I, have you looked, have you thought about putting, moving the building up and parking in back?
You know, the one thing I would just mention on that is if you look at the neighbors, the house abutting, if you go to your application packet, you'll see there's the aerial view of the site.
Yep.
And if you look at that, you'll see that there's a house, almost up, pretty close to the property line, that's in the back. So, it may be preferable to have the parking in front, only because there is, you know, a pretty close neighbor in the back, and I'm not sure they're going to want headlights shining into their house. However, it would be, depending on the department's preference, that if there is parking in the front, then at least there's some nice vegetation in there, it just sort of breaks it off the producedness and hardness of the...
But why couldn't there be a solid fence in the back to screen the neighbor's house and split the parking half in the front, half in the back?
It seemed to be from my reflection, reading it, that what they wanted was some sort of lawn in the front. I didn't get even said that specifically in the ordinance.
It also has the term "to the extent feasible."
Right.
So there is some squishiness there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a shall or must.
Well, and the screening references, you know, public ways and adjacent or abutted properties, so there's no requirement that it's screened just to the front.
But I mean, it's almost, the parking lot's bigger than, bigger than the building in a residential neighborhood, that's...
Jazz business, big anymore. But there is nothing in the front. No hedges, no trees.
I intend to put the grass there, but we didn't specify on the roof. It could have to be some sort of vegetation or a tree.
Well, the other thing I can't help from the plan I have is there's also a requirement, parking spaces should be located at less than fifteen feet from the front property line. And I can't tell on this drawing that I have right in front of me if that's the case here.
The extent feasible parking area should not be located within required front yard.
Do you know the distance between the sidewalk and the proposed edge of the sidewalk here for the parking lot?
There should be a scale in the plan, I would think.
It looks like it's very tight. It's not, it's not anywhere near fifteen feet.
Is there a scale in the plan?
The one inch equals ten feet, my eyes are working.
Can you, I can get a...
It's body walking, but...
It's about ten, maybe ten feet.
I also have to consider...
Do you want to look at anything on the larger one, Chuck?
Snow removal. And dumpsters.
If this were accepted as proposed, where would you put the snow?
Here, there's enough room here.
On the side?
Right, on the side here. There's not much, but over here as well. I intend to get country lanes, ninety-six gallons rollups for the... Instead of dumpsters, they...
It's less than a half an inch, or a little more than a half, five-eighths.
The garbage is, it's all going to be four individual cans.
Four individual, and where would those be?
Street pickup?
Street pickups, you just have to roll it up, they come in.
How much do you see those containing, what's the size of them?
Ninety-six gallons, yeah.
They're like, do so and all the other ways.
Yeah.
Okay, so, couple, the parking is an issue that needs to be further dealt with. Pavement, I just think we need to pass this by the city engineer.
Pressing through.
For the stormwater runoff, if we even agree to go that route. You're way too close here with the parking lot.
Yeah, that's right.
Especially if we're going to make the exception and let it be in the front, it's going to be really close to any of us.
This application was given to the city engineer with a reply date based, again, on our zoning regulations of by Tuesday, July 16th, so I can follow up with him if you'd like.
So we have some time to analyze this.
Or we can continue this.
We can continue the hearing.
We can, but I mean, if we want to talk about changes to the plan, we should probably let the app know what we think.
Yeah.
Okay, but if he's going to have individual pickup, it looks like he's going to have enough room for snow removal, but you should, I think you should have at least a couple of trees in there.
Well, there's got to be screening for, between the neighborhood. You're also going to need, if you, even if you do those ninety-six gallon rollaways for each individual unit, you're going to have to have some sort of a screening and area that's acceptable.
To that.
To kind of have a hedge in your center.
How do you plan to light this building, the exterior, how would you light the parking lot? There's nothing...
Hmm, anything, there's no common space.
Well, the parking lot's common.
Well, you need some lighting for the parking.
There's a pole right here, I don't know.
I think that would be enough for the full parking lot. Maybe a light in here, so for entrance and that.
And are any of these units going to be handicapped accessible?
So there are any values for, should there be at least one handicap parking space for that anyways?
You don't need to have one space until you have fifteen spaces.
Right.
For our handicap parking ordinance. So one handicap parking space, once you have, once you hit the fifteen space threshold.
He's below the, yeah.
So he's below the threshold to have a handicap.
I mean, I think it's kind of getting ahead of ourselves to talk about screening and things like that, if we don't know if he's even able to put the lot in the front.
Yeah, that's the key issue.
First, first, go forward from there.
But you can probably think that if it does stay in the front, you should have a plan for the front and possibly for the back. You know, instead of having him come back and then we're going to say, you're going to need this and that, and then he's going to have to read. You could probably make a supplement plan for both, if that would be possible.
Well, I mean, might as well just wait and find out if he can move it and what other options there are and how to do it, rather than come up with different plans for different...
It puts a burden on you that may not be necessary.
Yeah, so we'll just have to hold off too on the possibility, if it does get changed in the back, you'll need lighting in the back for the lot anyway, so.
Right.
We'll just have to wait on that.
In terms of our determination, I mean, it's clearly in violation of the rules as it is. This is why we're here to make an exception, but in terms of our evaluation, we're waiting to hopefully hear from the building inspector.
What's a violation of the rules?
We're talking about the parking being in front.
It's not a violation, because the language says "when the extent feasible," which means that if it's not feasible, he can have it in the front.
So the question is, is it possible to...
So the question is, what the board needs to determine is, based on surrounding land uses, the neighbors, does it make sense to have the parking in the front or in the back? I mean, it is, it is Parsons Street, which is a main thoroughfare, it's not like it's a little side street.
Right.
So, there's that. Across the street's going to be a fairly major residential development.
Has anyone...
If it's preferable to have it in the back, you need to think about how that parking would impact the surrounding neighbors. If you're going to be putting lighting back there, there's light pollution that could happen in terms of those neighbors' windows, and so you just need to, you need to consider both of those, I guess.
Right.
And what's going to be less detrimental of an impact to the neighborhood. Again, being a dense residential neighborhood on a fairly main thoroughfare.
Is that plan show what the rear setback is there?
It's required twenty feet.
I'm wondering if there's room to slide it all back, just because it's...
No, I think he's right at the...
Right at twenty feet?
Twenty-foot threshold there. It's a tight lot. If it's something that big.
I mean, I'm more concerned with how close it comes up to the property line on the sidewalk there than... Especially if we're going to try to get screening in there, there's, you know, a five-foot gap between the, where the parking lot ends.
And it's got maybe six, a little more than six feet.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it. So what do we do? We're going to...
I guess we'll have to wait until we hear from the engineer. And we need from the building inspector also.
If you want, I can follow up with him. He hasn't responded, and he's pretty responsive to these applications, so I don't believe, I don't believe the building inspector has an issue with this.
I think from his perspective, this is cut and dry.
Right, so we're just waiting for...
Before coming down here, I did stop and talk to him. He said, "You follow with all the rules and regulations with business, zoning business, and as far as the building itself, and if you follow the setbacks and account of the parking lots, you should be all okay." And my architect did talk to him before he made all the necessary...
Who's your architect, may I ask?
JLS.
John.
From when I was looking in here, someone like the building inspector or another committee that doesn't reply by a set date is saying that they don't have a problem with that, right? We go forward with that being the standard.
The date is the nineteenth, that's why I have that date. So the date that the, that the application comes in and gets stamped, that day I send it out to all of the relevant departments that need to oversee it. They have thirty-five days to comment. So their deadline date is the nineteenth, just based on the special permit.
So we can interpret that as a okay from him?
Once the nineteenth...
No, the nineteenth doesn't come yet.
It hasn't come out of the...
Or the ninth.
What I'd like to do is continue this to our next meeting.
Right.
I'm, I'm, my only real concern, I think that it's less than ideal, but I honestly believe that if we start moving this building around, based on this, this overhead view, we're really, I don't think it's going to be helpful to the neighborhood. I think that some of this can be worked on with some landscaping.
Would you like the app, you need to request of the applicant to, the things that you'd like to...
No, I think you can put some, some requirements on that. I really just want to hear about the stormwater runoff and the city engineer's take on that. To me, if we can get some landscaping in there...
Just not issue.
I think, because I think if we move this up and try to do half in the front and half in the back, it's really going to be a mess for the...
Well, I mean, it's like you said, the front for the parking and the house are basically the same, so if you flip them, the house is going to be five feet from the street.
Right.
So it's not, what we're thinking, splitting it up and doing half and half, but I don't know.
You still have a problem with it.
Yeah.
You'll still have a problem with the neighborhood, even if it's half, you still have cars going around back.
And it's going to make snow removal...
That much harder.
Nightmare, so it doesn't make sense.
And the lighting, like Jessica said that, it might, Jessica said that, it might be light pollution.
As we'll see next meeting.
Does everybody in a...
Well, I mean, what do you want to find out from the city engineer about the storm?
Stormwater drain.
But what about, I mean, whether there's a drain there?
Whether he feels that there needs to be a more involved plan filed, that can be done, and if there, there needs to be a more comprehensive stormwater runoff.
There's going to be more runoff because of that roof.
You got, you got watershed off the roof, and then you've got, that's a good-sized parcel of pavement.
Sir, how much, how much land are you going to be disturbing with the building? I mean, are you redoing the parking lot, or are you going to reuse the existing parking lot, or?
I'm going to redo one of the parking.
Okay, so do you, okay. We have a stormwater management ordinance, so I think the best thing to do is, let's, let's talk to the city engineer, and then he'll direct us in the appropriate, because if, if there is some sort of stormwater permit that has to be taken care of as part of this process, the planning board is responsible at this juncture, as that entity, that permitting authority, with the special permit before planning board. So it's your responsibility to, to issue the stormwater permit as part of the special permit.
Is, as far as the parking, is everybody else who think that that's not a concern, that we can deal with this through screening and landscaping?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why you can't keep the parking lot in front, as long as, except we get the stormwater, and he does some type of vegetation, a couple of trees, some protection, whatever.
I mean, it's less than ideal, but it, I remember the old building there, and aesthetically, that was not any, you know, I think...
It was actually sitting right here, and all this is with parking.
Yeah, you know, come from the side.
Yeah.
I remember that.
So, you know, this, this with the right landscaping and stuff, could be a nice enhancement to, to the street if it's done right.
Well, when you think about the park, it's not any different than a machine shop on the street. We got a machine shop sitting back there, and you're parking in the front. So it's not any different than that. Yeah.
Well, except we don't know when that machine shop parking lot was provided.
No, it's...
I mean, it's not, it's not the same thing.
It's the same thing, isn't it?
No, the whole, the whole concept of the zoning ordinance is that it's different when you're...
Right.
But, yeah, no, I mean, there, there's definitely parking lots all through Massachusetts that come right up to the curb.
Do you want something different there?
No, I mean, I think if people are comfortable with this, then we can figure out a way around that.
I mean, it's less than the ideal, I agree, but I, I think to, to cut out and reduce parking opportunities for people that are going to live there, to, you know, the only other alternative is to say, you take out one row and you take out one unit.
Right.
And that's kind of pretty hard, I don't, I don't see that in the, in the zoning that we, we really need to make that kind of, or kind of right, to make that kind of call.
I concur about the parking lot. I think in the end, in my own opinion, is that this is probably the best design that I could conceive of for what you have to work with.
Yeah, because don't forget, the house was way up the inside and the parking was on the side, now it's more centrally located, and it has room around the building and the parking lot with the vegetation, and I don't think there should be that.
Are the trees on the back of the lot still there, or they're gone?
Yeah.
They're still there?
All right, that was my next thing. I'm going to have to take them down. There's no, it's too big. There are two huge trees. I don't know how much it's going to cost me to do it, but there's so much junk that's going to be from those trees on the roof. The roof is going to be gone in five years, I'm going to have to re-roof it. I work in construction, so I know the, what it is going to do to the lot and building and everything else. And the first storm that we had, it might damage the building or something. So, I'm sorry to say, I'm going to have to take those two huge trees in the back, they're going to have to come down.
And type are they?
What is it?
What type are they?
One is pine, and it's just straight on, it's nothing. And another is maple. It's a beautiful tree, I, my heart is, really, I don't want it, but, but I intend to, I didn't think about the vegetation, but I would have done it anyway, because I like the trees myself. In fact, uh...
Well, I guess when we talk about screening, we can talk about replacement.
Trees for...
I think between now...
The trees are healthy. I can tell you right now, I'm not one, I mean, when we had an issue with, when they were cutting down trees because of the storm, and, you know, for the electrical wiring, we went through a lot, and we had a lot of trees cut, and we saved a lot of trees. If those trees are healthy, I cannot see taking them down. There are trees in the neighborhood, and you're going to get blown leaves from the other trees and that, I don't know. They're healthy trees.
No, no, there's a lot of trees here on the side, right over here.
So you're going to get...
I'm not going to touch that.
Right, but you're still going to get leaves from those trees.
I'm not worried about that, it's just being over the roof. It's going to be right next over the roof.
If you look on the satellite photo, Chuck, the trees cover the back half of the lot.
Yeah, it's, it's just really, really old.
I don't need to be here, but I don't want to...
But I think you can, I think you can, you're going to have the, the old, the side of the old building is going to be cleared, it's going to be to the side of the parking lot. I don't think there's any reason why we can't put new trees in there.
I can put as many trees as I can see right here front, and there's a, you know, I can put my mind to it.
Especially the maples, we lost some of the maples.
I can put maples back in there.
Through the disease.
All right, so we can continue, no, yeah. So continue.
We make a motion to continue with that.
We make a motion, we continue until our next meeting, which I think is the 23rd. Or 2nd?
No, 2nd.
22nd, right.
What time? Did you say six o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, six.
We'll take it up first, right after the administrative stuff. Is there a second?
A second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A public, for extensions. Okay. I think we'll just, if, if the city engineer responds, when he responds to us, we can get a cop, a copy of that response to you, so that you can prepare based on whatever he says.
Okay.
We'll hear you at the, at the next meeting.
In the meantime.
In the meantime, you can work, it's going to be a concern of ours, the vegetation and site plan, if you work on, on some of that, this...
The planting plant, you're requesting a planting plant.
The planting, the, also the screening for the trash receptacles, and...
Lighting for the parking lot?
Lighting, I think you're going to need some, some lighting. At least, I mean, there's going to be lighting in the, in the entryways of the building anyway, if it's a rental, you're going to have to do that.
They're all going to be individually, each, they will have the lighting up front, but I don't know.
Right, for each of our...
They're four-way anyway, one way or another, either they're going to be occupied, ninety percent they're going to be a light up. In my opinion, to put a lighting pole there would be, you know, too much light, maybe.
Take lower, downward directions.
Yeah, I think it's on the dish, no, I think that pole that's up there, I don't know if it'll cast enough light.
We don't want to be a telephone pole with a big light.
No, no, but he says like the lighting that's out there, and that...
That's street lighting.
Right, I don't think, right, but I don't think, I think you were saying that that might be enough light for the parking lot, but I'm not sure.
If it's not occupied, there's enough parking lot there to, to get the light.
From that?
From the street light.
Street light, but it's from...
Also says it has to be shielded, it's not higher than fifteen feet.
Right.
Each unit will have a light up front here.
Right, right lighting. I'll try and see if we can take it right through there and see if that casts enough.
Did you vote?
Yes, we did.
You're on this.
We're all set.
We're all set. So, see you in two weeks.
Go ahead, go ahead, do it, do what you want to, go ahead. I think this will end up being one decision though, in the end.
We think you're one, yeah, we consider it as one.
My concern would be on that is that if we, for any reason, we didn't go through, I just don't want it to come back.
You're gonna have to.
Well, unless it's the same. Unless it's the same, it was mine, I was asking to take it out of my construction company's.
See, but I'm not willing, I'm not willing to just blanketly say any use is good there. The special permit is gonna be specific to whatever business goes there.
I mean, you could, one way you could do it is you could, you could frame it as a leasing to professional, you could do a blanket statement, retail professional, something like that.
I find our conversation before that if another construction company came in, that would be fine.
Right.
So, I mean, that's why with this, it just is taking it out of my company's name and saying this is the space that we wanna keep using and this is the space that we wanna use.
You wanna lease, you wanna lease that front building to another storage company?
That and the main building, we just wanted to find our section to stay on the existing part.
If we do it separately and do a special permit for you, I, I understand and I, I agree that we could do it for you separately in the sense that it would be for your company's use, then the other spaces that you're gonna lease would be contingent upon a special permit that would deal with their, their use. I, I don't see how we can give a special permit for, for just, you know.
An unknown.
Use.
What's called?
I mean, the front building now, our, my understanding was, was approved for storage, that's what we wanted to clarify.
That's, that's part of it. So, the, part of the clarification for the 2006 decision, which you all have a copy of, I believe, correct?
Yep.
Kevin has my copy, so I can look at it, but there is language in there about, which I believe was sort of unclear language between enforcements and what was permitted and I, I don't have it in front of me. So there's a statement in there about that Five Star will, will use it, but then there's a second sentence after that saying.
Yeah, so the building's basically occupied by Five Star modeling for office and storage equipment. The remainder of the building's space is approved for use of storage. Any change in use shall require approval by the planning board through a revision of the special permit.
So the, so the problem is that the building inspector was not clear that, that, that sentence would allow Five Star to lease that property to somebody else. He was under the impression or his interpretation of the decision was that it was storage for Five Star only. So, that's partially what needs to get clarified tonight is Five Star.
That's how I read it, when I read this, that's where I.
Right.
But so do you just want that clarified to say that anybody can use that for storage space?
My understanding was this portion was to make it so that that could be used for anybody and also redefine the area that we would use. I mean, like you say, I guess just about anybody who goes there, I would think a construction company would have to come back here. Everybody would clarify that we wanna take about half of the back lot from what we use to not shrink that area down. Use the outdoor storage, that's what we're looking for currently. We occupy all of this. So we're looking to modify this, so that this is our space, this could be leased to basically anybody of storage and in this building we would come back. I mean, obviously we have an application now, but in the future, this would always be dealt with as a separate issue.
So, another thing that confused me about this is the, the 2006 decision says that outside storage should be minimal temporary storage of construction materials, but then it looks like it's a huge spot and you're talking about expanding the use of that. I mean, has it, has it been?
Shrinking my area by fifty percent.
No, I know you're, you're shrinking it now, but I'm curious about the use that's been going on for the past seven years and whether that's gonna continue to be more than sort of minimal temporary storage or it's gonna be more.
Well, I believe it says trailers on there, it was construction trailers, so then that's what's there, construction trailers and.
Yeah, it says for temporary, outside storage should be minimal for temporary storage of construction materials such as lumber, shingles as well as the utility trailer. And so is that just generally there or does that change?
Right now we have, the, the difference is, right now we have probably six, seven company trucks, you know, that aren't gonna be parked there anymore.
Right.
So we can consolidate our space quite a bit for those front button building.
Parking lot on that curb.
We do spaces.
Credit, credit spent of redo back there. It's a pretty big rotating wall.
So permanent.
Oh, no, no, I'm just kidding. I'm not knocking it.
The nasty tanning wall.
So, what you're looking for is though, is it the front storage building that you wanna be clarified that another construction company could use it for storage?
My construction is just basically.
Another company could use it for.
The front is the least of all storage ways, the back to define our area.
And the back space also to be, the remainder to be able to be used by another company?
No, us, well, yes, the remainder, other than what you have clarified. This would be for Five Star Building Corp.
Yeah.
This building and this back area along with the front building would be leased, again, not specified. I mean, the front, I'd like to leave it open or it's leased storage because what was in there, I don't know if that makes much of a difference.
No, the only issue I have with the front is if you wanna lease it for storage and you want it to be not just a building company and just, just term storage, that would be fine in my mind, but I mean, it, it has to be clearly understood that it's not, it's not, it's not a business operation, there's nothing going on there, there's no repair work going on there.
We have to have them come back or whatever, somebody wanted to.
And not commercial storage, like for people to come in and use for their own storage or something.
Honestly, the language is vague and we, it's since day one that was leased space. I mean, obviously it was a whole different board, different building inspector, everything, but that was the intention, that's how it was brought to us. I mean, we never had intentions of using that. We had a lease sign when we came originally. That was.
What was there?
It was leased to a welding company, they just kept it for storage for all of the things.
Storage.
It's always been like that.
So is it still leased to a welding company?
No, no, it's worth, it's leased to a guy who does car or whatever, he keeps all his storage stuff in there.
But I've been hearing here's car repairs.
There was somebody, I heard from Wayne that there were issues that somebody was painting, but we went and talked to him and, you know, nobody has seen this that I'm aware of, so we made it clear, we sent him a certified letter and explained to him that that's.
There was an issue that he was working on his garage tanning oil and, you know, repairing the cars and then doing some stuff in that stuff with, with the letter he sent and I think the building inspector got involved in that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked a while, I dealt with.
That was a while ago. And that's.
Well, I mean, we got it, well, probably three weeks, we sent them, two weeks, three weeks, we sent them a certified letter, explained to him, reiterated a copy of his lease, said this is what it is, this is what you're agreed on, so, but I mean, the building has, it's been a leased space for the past nine, whatever, we had seven years.
But you know, it's just leased to, for storage, it's not used for individual.
Figure to talk about the car.
Out of that, I don't know.
I live at twenty-five East Street and that repair shop, there is repairs going on out of there. We, it's, it's all different times, it's not a set time like nine to five. I mean, there's been a couple times where they've been out there, two, three o'clock in the morning, stand in, painting your hair, everything, I mean, it, that doesn't bother me. I mean, it just, the whole thing is that there are people working out of there. Like I said, they don't have set times or whatever, but I don't know, it's just, there are people working out of there.
That was not cleared out.
It's the first time I've heard of, of that. I mean, like I said, Wayne Hammond came over, talked to me, says, you know, there's an issue with the spray paint. I said, I've been talking to this guy a hundred times, we sent him a certified letter and talked to Wayne about that and talked to Joe, you know, I've been in there, he's got car parts stacked to the, the ceiling, so, you know, I can address the issue again, but, or, I mean, I believe we sent Joe also the copy of the lease, it's leased as a storage space, but we can drive the issue home again.
I mean, I'm willing to work and, and I understand you're trying to run a business and, and that's fine, as long as the tenants that you're renting to are gonna adhere to the terms of the lease, that's, you know, it has to.
Has to valid, so he's well aware that if he'd like to do anything of the store, he needs to come down here and find his own special permit, so, like I said, this is most of the discussion that's been a bit over the past few weeks.
That report is concerning. Back to the issue about whether to hear them as one or not.
Well, we kinda, we're off on a tangent here, just hearing his separately, I think it makes more sense probably to hear them all at the time and as we get this ironed out, I mean, we're into it now, we're just talking about this lease, we might as well just continue talking about this lease.
Well, except if we do conceivably allow the other one, we're then gonna have to modify this again, right?
I'd like to, to be able to write a decision for the All-Star portion of it and then write it, write a decision for the main building, part of it based on the use as being presented.
I, I prefer that only because then every time we have to come back for a new tenant comes in, it's more the tenant coming because it's not redefining people's space. The, the different, the three different parcels of space won't change. If, if a tenant changes, they would come back and apply for whatever business they're, they happen to be doing.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. Also then how would you, how would we amend or, or revise the Five Star's special permit in such a way that we're not giving them a blanket?
Well, there needs to, the site plan needs to get rephiled as an amended site plan, so that, that's my biggest concern, so that enforcement wise, the building inspector knows what's supposed to be happening in those buildings. That was my greatest concern, is to at least have a site plan that represents where Five Star is conducting its activities and what's happening with that front building and clarifying that language in his decision because it's been a point of confusion.
So, we clarify that, that that is a storage facility to be used as, as storage only. We submit this, this, this drawing as, as part of the decision where it shows the parking lot outlook, the parking lot outline with the storage that Five Star is proposing. And then it also has the main building proposed as an alternative or separate parcel for, for, for a subsequent site plan or, or special permit that we're gonna hear, so.
And then just simply say that any change in use requires a new site, new special permit?
Right, you said same language that was in the 2006 decision in terms of that.
The only thing we would change in the 2006 decision is we would, we would say, clarify the fact that the front building can be used for storage, not, not just Five Star storage.
Right.
Leased storage.
Leased storage, or, yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, the procedural that clarifies everything.
Are there any other conditions in that 2006 permit that you need to, is everything else okay?
Was there ever a parking plan filed?
Originally, we submitted a, a parking site plan.
Do we have anything on file or?
I mean, you knew what I was walking into for, hard telling, not known. There could be one in those piles, I don't know. When I find them, I put them in the right place.
It's just like a dirt lot right now, right? I mean, I'm looking at the satellite photo, like it's not.
It's old.
Oh, is it, is it paved and painted?
Well, the, the front was always paved, but it's horrible shape, so the joint was repaved and then it kinda comes down across the front and the back is basically like Millings.
Okay, so when you're talking about the seventeen parking spaces, are they painted or?
And they're in back of the main building?
No, everything's in front.
One here, one here, there's two here, two here. It's been like that since we moved in.
Now, all seventeen would be controlled by the main building?
Yeah, because the front building shouldn't have any parking and we don't have any need for parking.
Is there still lighting by three motion detector lights? Yeah. Where's the stack of fence put in? Yeah.
So, under, under item one, your, your, your Five Star, um, storage of equipment, that, that was the front building or that the main building?
It was meant to be. Oh, that's the, that's the barn.
Okay. And that would now be part of separate, you're, you're really abandoning that.
The only thing we're gonna have there is just this here, just outdoor, basically a gravel parking area, just to keep the trailers that were originally permitted on there. Right now, and in fact, if you drive by, the majority of everything is there now, but, we need it to define the area.
So you don't need any interior storage space?
No, for Five Star.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the, with the main building being used for, for another
use, that, that is totally separate than what we're talking about with this other parcel. I don't have a problem with that. I, my thinking is I just wanna see this, I've never gone back since it's been there. I just wanna walk the thing. I didn't have a chance to do that, but before this meeting, I usually try to do a drive-by at least. I don't have a problem with, with this at all and maintaining the 2006 decision and changing item one to reflect the change of use on the main building and stating something that it's governed by another special permit and then with a new item one better defining the parking arrangement, what's going on and clarifying the, the leased storage of the front building.
That's the parking that concerns me.
The parking.
Because doesn't the other section affect?
Okay, so.
You're talking traffic and coming and going and the two, you know, they need to relate with each other.
So, the parking's gonna be basically for the other occupant will say because Five Star doesn't use a lot of that parking space.
We won't use any of it, I mean, that, basically.
You don't, you don't have like employees working on, on the site and all it is, is for storage.
If we go there.
So there's seventeen parking spaces for the next, actual for the next tenant.
If we went once a month, I'd be surprised, I mean, it's basically trailers. Basically we're taking what we have and consolidating it into a smaller area. We don't want the main building anymore, we're not looking for any of this space anymore and we just wanna clarify that.
What that is.
What that is. I mean, that's really all the intent of this was, is to say, instead of all this, I just want this.
Right. And I know, and then like you said, item one, it should, we shouldn't have a large issue with.
You're, you're talking more with this use? No, I'm still trying to, I'm still dealing with the fact that like the original permit sort of contemplates minimal outdoor storage and it sounds like this is more comprehensive, so I'm trying to think of what language, I mean, what kinda stuff are you, you say you're leaving things there for a month at a time, multiple trailers?
There's a, there's a flatbed trailer that's been there for years, it's like a low-profile trailer, there's a ten-foot utility trailer that stays there and there's two office trailers that stay there, one's twelve feet long and one's. that stay there. One's twelve feet long and one's nineteen feet long. That's what stays there. I mean, it's been there for.
Yeah, because I.
Since the beginning, since I moved in there.
Yeah.
In fact, we're taking a lot of what we had there and it's coming out. We have all ladders and all that stuff's there. All that's coming out.
Are there any other construction materials you're keeping there now or is most of the other side now?
We really don't have anything and we don't sell it anymore anymore. I mean, there's, there's a pallet of plywood that we use there that basically used for protection board. That's going to come with us.
So it's really just the trailers for most part?
Really, I just don't have the parking area, the new space, nor do I want to fill that, you know.
With trailers, so if we worded this with trailer storage and large, large item storage or?
I don't, I think it just.
It's outdoors.
It's outdoor storage.
And then the area where that is, that's part of why I wanted.
I mean, really not worried about building it through the, I mean, outdoor equipment and trailer storage, that's.
I don't see equipment and outdoor storage of equipment and it's trailers. I don't see anything else that we could do with it. All we want is to define that and separate that from the, from the building. It's always had trailers out there, so.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
I mean, I don't want to see us complicated more.
Well, I'm trying to complicate it. Trying to clarify it.
Right. So the outdoor storage and trailers. Basically, that's what it was in the beginning.
Looking for anything additional.
Well, as long as we accomplish it by going down and taking a look at it, we'll put it that way. What we actually accomplish?
Nothing other than.
It's not going to change anything compared to what it is already.
Right.
Why do not look at it?
If you're, if you're comfortable worrying on this, that's fine. I'm fine with it. I'm trying to.
I'm fine with it also, as far as it's.
Trying to make it some complicated image, just, you know, just.
It's just, that's all it's going to be, is the trailers and outdoor storage, so it's not going to change from previous years. You think that you want to go over here and take a look at it just?
Oh, I don't, I don't need to.
You're okay with it.
Okay.
What other changes that you want to see and worry?
Well, I think we should specify, I mean, I think we should be very clear about what the front building is being used for, storage only, no services, no, you know, repair activities. I mean, I think we can, that's one way we can clarify this going forward for enforcement issues is by making this clear about that building.
Well, I don't know what's clearer than lease storage space. If we say lease storage.
I agree with it.
I agree with that.
That means no.
But who enforce that kind of thing? Somebody do it. Somebody who goes down and takes care of it.
Of course. A call comes into the city, the building inspector goes and investigates. If it's a violation, he'll, he'll submit a cease and disorder.
All right, I'm just curious as to how.
And then if they're doing repair work, then they need to come before the CBA, get a special permit for repair services.
Right.
So if the neighbors have an issue with that and they see it, the only thing to do is make the call. And the building inspector, you know, start the ball rolling there.
I think the motion can be to say that it's lease storage space and no services or businesses to be conducted from that location.
That's clear.
Can you make the motion?
I can't make the motion, but I can.
I make said motion.
I'll second said motion.
Can you repeat it again, please?
Please.
That the front building be allowed to be used storage building and that no business or services be conducted from that location. So that would define it as strictly storage.
Excellent motion. That the front building be used as a lease storage building and that no businesses or services be conducted from that location. And that we otherwise approve. Is that how?
Well, I think we should keep in the language in the first one about the impervious parking surface, if it is expanded and no lighting, if they change lighting, they should come back. Just to have that in there.
Under, as an item one bullet? See, I'd like to leave all the two through seven.
Well, some of it, I mean, two is conceivably done, although none of us have seen it. I mean, we could get a parking plan, but I think they've given us a parking plan about where the places, the current spots are.
Maintain the existing language regarding lighting and?
The paved surfaces on the premises. I mean, the six-foot stockade fences is already installed.
I think we should say we maintain.
Okay. Maintain by the applicant for screening and security?
That would be good. It's good.
So then we want to specify a little clearer what the outdoor storage is? To make it clear that it's.
Well, it's.
Temporary storage of construction materials and trailers?
Yeah.
All right, do you want to repeat that last part?
That outside storage should be for temporary storage of construction materials and trailers. By a Five Star building, right?
Right, that's fair. Five Star building.
Our corporation.
I'm better to say.
So far, I motion to approve the special permit contingent on the front building being used as a lease storage building and that no businesses or services be conducted from that location, maintaining the existing language regarding lighting and the paved surfaces on the premises, outside storage shall be for temporary storage and materials by Five Star Building Corporation.
Okay, but we're not allowing the part dealing with the main barn and office areas?
Item five. It includes maintaining the six-foot stockade fence.
You want that added?
Yeah.
Maintaining the six-foot stockade fence?
For screening and security.
So, not that it's a big deal, but that fence is only stockade on the neighbor's side.
Right.
But the rear is chain link, you know, it makes much difference, but it's not like we're going to go out and see a chain link and think that we tore it off a second.
Stockade slash chain link.
Yeah, stockade, but it's for the side, for the people living on the side.
Yep.
So, I mean, for this main barn and office areas, do we want to add that it's not required to be occupied by Five Star building, but that any future use needs to be approved by a special permit?
I think we can put another item in the conditions, that the main building. And its uses will be dealt with.
Be a separate.
And a separate special permit application.
Second, we go along and keep that.
Job done and everybody's happy with it.
Can you just repeat them back to Jim so that everybody can hear, one more time?
I motion to approve the special permit contingent on the front building being used as a lease storage space building, should be a lease storage building, and that no businesses or services be conducted from that location, maintaining the existing language regarding lighting and the paved surfaces on the premises. Outside storage shall be for temporary storage and materials by Five Star Building Corporation, maintaining the six-foot stockade chain link fence for screening and security. Additionally, the main building and its uses will be a separate special permit application.
Is everybody okay with that, applicant and board?
Sounds great.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Harry, uh, second, check second, sorry.
Anybody else?
Nope, I guess.
No. All right, fine.
Substances? Okay.
So the, the decision will be drafted within fourteen days and then there's a twenty-day appeal period. Twenty-day appeal period, special permit. Thank you.
We'll leave the log.
That'll take care of it.
Okay.
And there are people here to stay or?
It's up to you. I, you might want to stay for a few.
Can't see.
Yeah, I can see.
Yeah, easy.
Fire away, fire away. We're looking to lease building that's in the rear, the main building, above and below basement area and the back section, which will be fenced off to a certain location also for a dog daycare center and some rehabilitation and recreation activities and things like that in that building. On the back section, there's a bus to trail. We plan on doing the slats in there, so if people are using the trail for the bikes, that there is a dog in that area, that's not going to scare them or vice versa, so if they're not being seen, obviously they could be hurt a little bit. Operation is from like seven as drop-off, being outside around eight and being picked up by six P.M.
Now, do you have like a site plan with the proposed outdoors use area?
If I could use the same site plan, I do not have that site plan with me, no.
There was one in the application titles that was sent to you. There was a hand drawn.
I saw right away when I looked for red flags was the health inspector and the manure plan. Has that been addressed at all and been brought to your attention?
It has not been brought to my attention normally.
There's, there's mention of it in the application.
That she, I think she said something, I'm not quoting directly, something along the lines of, I would love.
Rigger.
She would love to see, love was not the word to use.
Do you want me to read it?
Manure plan, yes, please.
Regarding this plan, the Board of Health would like a detailed plan of their plan for manure management. It should include, at a minimum, who will pick up the dog poop, how frequently, i.e. in spring, summer, fall, where will they put it until it's removed, who removes it and where it goes. That course came yesterday from the Board of Health and was sent to all board numbers via.
Waste removal two times a week by a private service. For waste dumpster removal may be an option for weekly pickup, handling the amount of trash accumulated.
So what are you going to do with the waste? You're going to store it there for, and have it picked up twice a week? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're saying that by, yeah, a private service, which they do come by certain areas and take it.
I just want to clarify, by waste, we do, we are referring to manure and other stuff, but manure specifically.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I understand that. It's probably going to come down to how much service traffic for light and everything.
How many dogs are you planning on?
Let's have twenty.
At any given time or will they all be there at once?
Yeah, possibility. I mean, they're not all outside at one time. They're, you know, they're rotated. They're exercised, they're. Using treadmills and things to that nature. Dogs that may have some disabilities, you will help them out.
Use it basically for dogs that are boarded, they're not dogs that you'll come in and trim and wash. It's just for boarding?
It's, it's only for daycare. That's it. They're not boarded there for.
Only with the daycare there, that's correct. Strictly daycare.
So at six o'clock at night, there'll be no more dogs on the property?
Well, it says here, six to eight, closing hours until nine P.M. Then later it says six to four to six.
You gotta have a special session with working on a dog inside the building. Dog would not be outside, it would be inside, like a residential house, being worked on on a treadmill or therapeutic wise and then taken home by the owner.
By nine.
There'll be no animals left on the premise until the next day.
So your plan is that by six P.M., the dogs will be, the dogs that were there for daycare will be gone?
Yes.
And the only ones that'll be there afterwards will be for specific services?
That is correct.
And it'll be done by nine?
If, if they're, you know, that could be once a week, twice a week or so, then the dog may be there late, whether or not it's a daycare dog that happens to stay to get extra help, you know, with the owner there.
You're talking about wild dogs?
No, no.
So there's after nine, the all dogs are gone, there are no overnights?
No overnights.
And how many employees?
Three, possibly four tops. There's ample parking. You'll probably have three spots, you know, possibly four, and then there's enough spots for drop-off and pickup.
I think your private service was the best answer.
Yeah.
To that issue, you know?
So twenty dogs at the max with three or four employees?
Yes.
What I'm just trying to say is, is twenty dogs that you'll have there the maximum?
Well, I, I would like to say, I mean, no on the max. I mean, I, this, you know, it's going to be a business here. I, I'm just really hopeful it's going to take right off. A lot of people are going to want to come.
No, what I'm thinking of is you have twenty dogs for three to four employees and if you're going to, and if it increases, will three or four employees be able to care for twenty or thirty or more dogs?
I'd say yes. I'm not looking at a hundred dogs or fifty or anything like that.
We're saying that if, like you say, if it does start to take off, you conceivably could.
Right, we would definitely have a cutoff point, if that cutoff point was, you know, twenty-five or, I mean, I hate to be limited to just twenty. I like, and I'm looking at, you know, say, you think for fifty.
Yeah, well, no, I don't want to see you turn away dogs that need the services.
That's correct.
That's the issue.
Well, at some point you'll run out of space anyways, isn't it?
Right.
It's not a huge space.
Yes.
Now, this is rehab services, is this run in conjunction with a veterinarian or someone with specialized training?
My sister is specialized in quite a bit of everything that we're talking about, but if the vet, a vet needed to come there to look at an animal or a dog.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
How this is being set up.
Yeah, you're not looking to have like operations or anything like that done there, but that would that come maybe evaluate a dog? Yes.
You have a special.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. I know.
Please do.
My name is Leslie Grinnell and I'm the owner of Eddie's Wheels up in Shelburne Falls. We make wheelchairs for disabled animals. I met Erica McKelway a dozen years ago when we were first starting our business. She was working for River Meadow Farm, which is one of the first animal rehabilitation facilities in the country and she worked with Doc Stewart. And she ran the canine and, the canine section of that rehabilitation center for about ten years. She personally rehabilitated and worked with many of the dogs that are my customers and also my own personal dog. In the past year, she has been working at Eddie's Wheels on Saturdays, working with my dogs, who I have a dog with a broken back that she has been working with. I have another dog with no front legs that she does gate work with. She provides consulting services and prosthetic and orthotic castings. She's very well regarded in the professional community. She has a long and continuous association with Doc Stewart down in Windsor, Connecticut. Dr. McCarthy, who's a local surgeon, he has just opened an office in Sturbridge. And Dr. Thompson at River Bend Farm, River Bend Animal Hospital. She gets consultation, she gets referrals from all of these local veterinarians and is very well known to them as an animal rehabilitation professional. She's skilled in laser, uh, trigger point myofascial release, uh, all various kinds of manual therapies for the rehabilitation of dogs with disabilities. She's extremely responsible, and she never gets it over her head. If she's, if she thinks there's a problem, she always refers to veterinarians. So, I would, I would have no qualms about recommending her, that's a, a serious and responsible person.
Some low and grace.
Leslie, thank you very much. Really appreciate it, verbal, so. She also, she takes care of the local state and police, the state police dogs and all those things also, which will more likely be stopping by.
I got a couple of questions. I live right next door, and we have a shepherd, and my thing is, what if somebody, one of the dogs gets out? My dog is only on this much of a, you know what I mean, and he's out, we work daytime, and usually he's in, by like four, my husband gets home about four, and Zeus is in then, and family active, but, I mean, if somebody, if one of them gets out, how, you know, what, is what I'm pretty much getting at, is that if one of them gets out and hurts my dog, who, who will be responsible? Will it be the people that own the business, or will it be the one who's renting out the business? I mean, my dog's, he's a big baby, he's, he's not a fighter for all means, he don't even bark when people come in the driveway or anything. But my concern is if some, if, if another dog gets out and hurts him, or the barking, you know, like nine o'clock at night, we're, we're in bed eight-thirty, nine o'clock, Monday through Friday. Weekends, we're up, you know, but Monday through Friday, we're eight-thirty, nine o'clock, we're in bed. And I mean, my bedroom is right there facing five-star, and the lights and everything, I mean, if, I'm, I'm not against it, I just wanna make sure that I'm reassured that nothing's gonna happen to my dog, and that it's not gonna be like weekends. Is it gonna be weekends that they're there also? Is it, is it a seven-day business? Is it a five-day business, or how?
Weekends, Sunday, or Saturday was till like two P.M., we were offering.
From six A.M. again?
I don't know, stick, was it six or... Monday through Friday, it was just six to six P.M., and then, uh... Saturday was nine to two.
I would think one important part, just, 'cause I did most of the site plan walking with Erica, to point out that might help ease the concerns a little. This is gonna be a stockade, we'll be doing an eight-foot, twelve-foot, twelve-foot. So, I mean, I can definitely see the concerns now, because now that's open, so the lot is not fenced in very well, especially not to accommodate dogs. But with this closed, uh, the dogs are basically gonna be brought right in from this lower level. There's a door that's right out there, so you can come in the barn, make it through the office, and basically make it to the back without going outside.
I think before we bring our office to a vote, there needs to be a, a detailed site plan with the building and the area in question that's gonna be controlled by the, by the tenant, and exactly where are the fences, and what type of fences are gonna be. I don't know, see how we can draw on that.
See, also, that's our bike path to go is right by Kevin's, uh, chain link fence, right down through there. That's the way we get to the bike path, right there.
And I notice there's a gate back here that's gonna go in?
Yeah.
That's, that's not accurate, oh, it is, I'm sorry, you barely see this, that's existing.
Okay.
It's an existing eight-foot opening, that's it.
Yeah, that's the one I had showed you, that, uh...
It's a, the fixed gate system for entrance and exit?
Right.
Lawn maintenance equipment? So what's that gonna be, that goes right out to the bike path, right?
It actually goes, we have ten acres out back, that, I mean, it crosses the bike path, but we own everything that's down by the river as well. So, we put that fence in for access to down there if we ever need it to get to, we've never really used it before, it's kinda overgrown.
Is that the only way for you guys to get access to the, to that back lot, or?
No, we also have an easement that runs all the way from Route Five along the power plant, basically along the bike path. We have an easement that it takes you there, and then down to the path as well, if you wanna drive down there, drive a vehicle or whatever.
And if the dogs are outside, are they gonna be supervised?
Yes.
So there's no problem with the deeper fence up there, no problem with the dog digging under the fence?
No, they'd be mired there, they're all macked up there.
I'm not sure who's responsible, the dog owner or the, or the daycare, but I mean, certainly needs to be.
If I can address that?
Sure.
I'm Ed Grinnell, I'm Leslie's partner at Eddie's Wheels, I'm also a state certified animal control officer. The dog is the responsibility of the person in custody, having custody of it at the moment. So if there was a liability, it would be on her insurance. Wouldn't have to track down the owner, unless the owner lost it before it entered the building, say in the morning.
As part of our lease, we have the certificate of insurance, coverages, and also the whole harmless, which basically makes her responsibility for any incidents there go on her insurance. So that was part of the lease. I can tell you what the fences are, obviously I know, I have a little more detailed site plan that was turned in, but, I mean, the fences are...
I like it drawn out, so that's part of the decision, it's not, it's not a...
I know we're gonna do extensive interviewing, and I can be taking dogs that if somebody comes up, they just wanna have their dog put for a day during the week. So, you know, that's unacceptable, so, not that we're gonna discriminate, but we'll return those away. Unfortunately, we don't need to deal with that, so...
And, and I, I think this is a very good service to the community and the canine world. I just think that we as a board need to see more, more detail, and, um, it's very hard to write a decision based on just hearsay.
I think also when you put together the plan, if you can put where the lighting is in the parking lot right now, since there's the three motion detector lights, I'm wondering if there's gonna be, you know, people coming and going more, especially if it's six in the morning or nine at night, we might need more significant lighting, but if we can see where that is, that'll be helpful.
And we're on stage, we're gonna ask the details of the fencing, and not just their layout, but, you know, height, strength, type.
I mean, the existing lighting, just give us some feedback, feels adequate. We actually have a full-mounted light that lights the other parking lot, uh, it's on the same timer with the rest of the streetlights. Then there is a motion light both on the front, the side, and then there's three lights along the back, all in one sensor. So those are the three.
Okay, so those, the top lot areas lit from the streetlight?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would also be helpful if there was a detailed plan of exactly when dogs were, were gonna be outside versus inside. Hours of op, you know, I know they're gonna start coming at six, but I mean, certainly, whether it's gonna be eight or nine A.M. when you're gonna be outside and potentially barking, versus, you know, it needs to be, I'd like to work within the business plan and model as much as possible, but we do have to be conscious of neighbors and things, and, uh...
All right, so we wanna continue this till we get a clearer site plan?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I second.
I'll third.
Are we gonna continue it to the, to the...
Next meeting? To the next meeting, was it the twenty-third?
Well, ask the applicant how much time they might need to put the site plan together. Two weeks is kind of tight, if they are willing to do that, then that's okay, but you should ask the applicant.
Why don't we continue it to the twenty-third, or to the following meeting, based on feedback?
You can just continue, continue it, so you can continue it to the twenty-third, and if he's not ready, just continue it again.
Just keep it to twenty-third.
Should we, before, should we see if there are any concerns or what might want to take about now?
Were you here to speak to something, sir?
I missed most of it, so.
Okay. Did you have any concerns that you wanted to...
I, from what I heard, I didn't hear anything that concerned me.
Okay. So you can call the planning department if twenty-third's gonna be too soon, if that doesn't give you ample time.
Well, you need to make a motion, and you need to second, you can't...
No, we're gonna, no, we're gonna, no, wait, no. No, we can continue it to the twenty-third.
I have Jesse motions to continue discussion until the applicant is prepared with the site plan.
No, we'll continue it to the twenty-third. We'll continue it to the twenty-third.
All right, till the twenty-third.
You have to pick a date, Jim, just, you know, you have to, when you make a motion, you have to continue it, you have to have a specific date and time, so that the general public knows when the hearing is concluded.
So we're gonna continue it to the twenty-third, or there?
Continue discussion till the twenty-third.
At six P.M.
Six P.M.
Yeah, we got, we have one all ready for six.
But if we, if we say six-thirty, then it means that we can't hear it till six-thirty, that's the problem.
But I understand.
I do understand.
So, um, you'll be second on the agenda, and then if, if there is a problem and you need more time, just let Jessica know, you don't have to show up on the twenty-third, we'll just continue it to the following meeting.
So to call the...
Oh, is there?
I second.
You seconded. Any more discussion? Call a favor?
I agree.
Oppose?
There you go.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if you're interested, anybody here is interested in coming back for the twenty-third, if it, if it's not going to be held on the twenty-third, it will be listed on the agenda that it's been postponed until the subsequent meeting, so that would be...
You have to, you have to open it, and then you... So what they can do is you can call the planning department, we'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just don't want to violate the law.
I'm glad you're doing that, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Do you have any...
She's pissed at me. That's on tape.
We all look to adjourn.
I'll second.
Call a favor?
All right.
Oppose?
All right, I'm packing up as soon as I can.
She is turning red.